... seventeen here in the Harvey Room. WCAT will be recording for future broadcast. Rise with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you may know, this is a combined meeting of the Town Council and the School Committee for purposes of electing a vacancy to the School Committee. What we're going to do is we're going to ask, first of all, I'd like to have, we have a lot of people here from town, from the public, I'd like to, we're going to open up nominations through the Council and the School Committee in a moment, but if you like, and I think it's appropriate, I'd like to have some folks stand, rise, and tell us who you consider the best person for this particular vacancy and why, and then we'll open up to nominations at that point. So if I can open up the public comment regarding the vacancy on the School Committee. Anyone would like to be heard, yes. Just if you can identify.
Sure, I'm lay on her ten, precinct three, I can never remember, it's three or six. Precinct three, I have two children, one's in public schools, one's in kindergarten, one is in third grade. And as a lifetime public school person and advocate, I think it's really, really important that the people on the School Committee have a lot of experience with education in schools. Shawna Hodge, who I am very much in support of, has all that kind of experience, his experience in special ed, and I was at some of the interim superintendent interviews, and there was a lot of focus placed on finding someone with experience in special ed. To be perfectly blunt, there are a lot of white people in here right now, and we need to have some diversity in our town. The leadership of our town needs to better represent the people that live in there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, right over here.
My name is Tatiana Lietta, and I have two children, and they're in public schools, and one of them is in special education. So you've said perfectly well pretty much everything I was going to say also. When I look at the School Committee, I see people from different professional backgrounds, and they all contribute very well to the School Committee, but unfortunately, in January, Don Sullivan, who has background in education, is going to leave, and I think, and I hope you all agree with me, that it's essential to have a person with a lot of experience in education replace the current vacancy, and hopefully, we also get more people of experience in education, especially in special education. And not only that, but I know that because of the field, Shawna is filmmaking guru in the field of education, she stays up to date in that field. So I think it's, she's in a position to be here.
Thank you. Anyone else? Julia?
Hi, Julia Wallers. I'm here, well, we're all here tonight because Laura Callis unfortunately left Winthrop, and that was a huge loss. She's not just a great person and a great leader, she's also a professional in education. She just got her PhD in teaching math, and she's brilliant, and she brought a real unique skill set to the School Committee, and that's a really big loss. So we have an opportunity to fill that gap with someone who can contribute some of those skills to bring to the School Committee, that's so important. So I don't know Shawna Hodge personally, but I reviewed her background, expertise, her education, and I think she brings so much to the table, I was really impressed with her background in special education, and her ability to save our school district so much money in out-of-district transfers. I know that was a really big issue for Laura as well, so to carry on that would be so important, and also really would love to see some more female leadership, I think that's a great opportunity. We have a lot of great candidates, and I think that's wonderful, but I really urge you to support Shawna Hodge tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? In the public? Yes?
I'm Jill Elliot, I'm from precinct, what was that, district precinct one, Dart Park area, and I'm here as well to support Shawna Hodge, who I do know personally, and I could go on and on about how amazing she is, how she's so involved in our kids' schools, we have daughters that are in the same kindergarten class, and Shawna's always offering to pick up my daughters from school and take her home, anything she can do. But I also want to support whatever else has already said regarding her experience that makes her more qualified, because obviously, she's an awesome friend and a great person, but also she's very experienced, she has twenty years of experience in the field of education. And on top of whatever else is said, she's also very good with budgeting and finance. She actually does the financing for a certain clientele where they can't do their own findings, and she takes that over for them. And she's been working on budgeting and grants, so all applicable to her position.
Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, my name is Robert Dwyer, I live in precinct three, I'm the father of three, of two, two of my children are in the public school system, my third child will be joining kindergarten next year. I'm also here in support of Shawna Hodge because of her professional experience, she has a graduate degree in behavioral science. I also think that as an African-American female, that she would bring some welcome diversity to leadership in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? The general public. Thank you for your input, we appreciate that. What I'm going to do is I'm going to open up the, to the Council and the School Committee for nominations. What we will do, we've got a full committee here, and it will be a roll call, thank you. We've got a full committee in the School Committee, everyone's here, so we've got a total of how many folks here?
Fourteen.
So we're going to need an eight count for the person that's going to be successful in that position. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask, I'm going to make a nomination myself, and I'm going to pass the gavel over to the Vice President.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Point of order?
Yes.
You had said an eight, an eight count for the vote. If there are multiple candidates, is it, it's a simple majority?
No, it will be an eight count. What we'll do is, we'll go down the list depending on where the votes fall, and we'll take the top two candidates, and we'll go from there. I think that's how we've done it in the past. If someone doesn't gather eight votes in the first round.
I think that would be sufficient.
Right. Okay. As I pass the gavel, I'm going to make my nomination, then I'm going to ask the Chairman of the School Committee to make hers. I'm going to nominate Suzanne Swope for the position on the School Committee with that vacancy.
We have one nomination for Suzanne Swope, I don't believe we need a second on that, is there a second?
Do we need a second?
I don't think we need a second.
Now if we can have the Chairman of the School Committee, and open up to the rest of the Council on the School Committee. Tom?
Yes, I consider it a privilege to nominate Shawna Hodge Barnett tonight for the vacancy in the School Committee.
So we have two nominations so far for the office of a School Committee person. Is there any other nominations?
I'd nominate Mr. Gus Matucci.
We have Mr. Gus Matucci, you accept, I assume. Shawna, you accept, I assume, I don't know, Susan?
She might be out.
Yeah.
But I know she, I talked to her, and I know she wants the position, so I'm sure she's accepting as well. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Even on, I want to say the motion to close nominations.
Motion to close nominations. Motion's been made, is there a second? On the closing nominations, motion's been made in second, all those are favor signified by saying aye. Those opposed, unanimous.
Okay. Pass the gavel back. Thank you. Now we can start our process of a formal vote with the Council. Is there anything anyone wants to add from the School Committee side, rest of all?
Susan, just with record, while you're outside, you do accept the nomination, is that correct?
You accept the nomination? It be considered? Yes. Okay, thank you. Yes?
Mr. President, I'd like to just back up my nomination with, I concur with what most of the public has said, we also have had an overwhelming number of emails from the public stating similar rationale for nominating and filling the seat with Ms. Hodge. Also, one thing that hasn't come up is that Shawna has extensive experience as an advocate, and being an advocate in an IAP meeting requires you to not only know the policies and procedures of special education and general education, but also to be a negotiator. And with negotiations coming up in all of our bargaining units in the beginning of 2018, I think this is, would be an asset to the School Committee. Thank you.
Great, thank you, ma'am. Anything else from any, anybody on the School Committee? Yes, Councilor Terry.
Go to the School Committee. Did you say the School Committee?
Yeah, there, anybody else? No.
I know this probably can't happen, I still am a proponent of trying to fill both seats at the same time. Have we had any legal advice on the possibility of doing that?
We have. Chief, if you want to follow up? We have had, yes.
Certainly waiting for a resignation, as required through the charter, the person who is vacated from that seat needs to officially resign, that has to be transwandered to the clerk of the town before having the vacancy declared. This is a kind of unique position, because you don't, you're vacating one seat and moving into another seat of that, so I certainly think, reading the charter literally requires someone to forward their resignation.
Yeah, and we did check for complement page as well. Anything else from the Council?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to speak on behalf of Gus Matucci. Gus has experience on the School Committee and has been very active in the education process in the town for the past, I'm going to say fifteen, twenty years, as well as finance experience, being on the town's Finance Commission. What we've really done with this Council over the past eight to ten years is torn down the walls between town and school. We really have made it so that everything's open with both, with both groups. And Gus has actually been a key to that. Just, for example, this year alone, you know, at budget time, he stepped up and, as all the crisis of laying people off was circulating on social media and all kinds of crazy things were being said, and nobody really knew what was going on, Gus was sat down with the new superintendent, town manager, and a few other folks, put a plan together where we ended up with no layoffs in the school side, and the town was able to step up and help out in certain areas. When push comes to shove, the town needs to work with the schools, and it's not, I don't want to say this in the wrong way, it's not just knowing education, with the reform act of 1993, the principals in charge of their schools, money is, it's a bottom-line budget, and the School Committee doesn't get into, involve in day-to-day operations of the school system according to how we're supposed to be running them. It's a policy board, it's an oversight board, it's a funding board, it moves money around, but the responsibilities aren't, the School Committee doesn't create agenda, curriculum it can guide, it can recommend, but it's up to the principals and superintendent to run their buildings, not the school department, the School Committee stepping in and doing things on administrative basis. So, and Gus has the experience from a, from being on the School Committee, in the finance experience, working with the school budget and the town budget, to hopefully make the progress that we've been making on keeping the town and schools transparent and working together.
Thank you. Anything else from the Council? Councilor, anyone?
Sure, I'd like to offer a few comments in support of Shawna Hodge. In looking at the School Committee, we need to look at the balance of the experience that the members bring to the table, and in my view, the community as a whole benefits from a well-rounded School Committee that has different areas of expertise and different life experience. And in making the appointment, we need to be looking at the professional training and the expertise that the applicants have. With Laura Callis's departure, we're losing someone on the School Committee who has, you know, just had, who had a wealth of knowledge on education and education policy, and we're losing that. So I think it's very important to fill the vacancy with someone who does have relevant experience in the field of education. And the budget and finances are important, but the budget is only part of the process, and the School Committee can't set a good budget or make the tough choices on how we're going to spend our money without first looking at the priorities in education policy and what goals we need to have for our students. That's part and parcel of setting the budget. So in order to do a good job with the policy, we really need a well-rounded group on the School Committee, and that's going to, that has to include folks on the School Committee who have an expertise and professional training in the field of education. Shawna has twenty years of experience in special education, she has a master's degree in behavior and behavioral analysis, and I think with Shawna Hodge's experience, we've Winthrop would be better positioned to make policy decisions and implement strategies to do a better job educating kids in our district and saving money overall. And last, since the public is not voting on this position, I think we do have an obligation to appoint an individual who is not only qualified, but also reflects the makeup of our stu, of the students and the community at large, and I think Shawna Hodge does that also.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes, Councilor.
First, I want to thank Shawna for putting your name forward, you do seem like a great candidate, and Ms. Swope, we had a great conversation on the phone. I want to take everyone back to about 2002, 2003, when our town was facing crisis, I know Pete and I were students then, we walked out, and it was folks like Gus Matucci that helped us move forward. This man helped fund the Viking Pride Foundation, along with Vinnie Crossman, Chris Seawes, Al Petrelli, you name. This is someone that has always put the community first, he is someone that has always represented this town, and I think we need to do what we think is right, and I think right now, Gus Matucci is the best candidate for this position. As a young elected official, whenever I had questions about the budget or anything that we needed talked about on the School Committee, Gus was a phone call away, and he was there advising me. So I ask you guys to consider Gus tonight.
Thank you. Bill Holden, then, come back to the Chairlady.
Been on the School Committee for twelve years, we have three roles, superintendent, policy, and budget. Superintendent, I think we're looking pretty good with Ms. Howard, whether she becomes the permanent superintendent, which I hope she does, I think we're all set there. Policy and budget, and I agree with Mr. Engmann, we do need a very strong candidate with a great background, but what the School Committee needs is a budget person. We have the superintendent, who is this former special ed director, we have Jen, who's a current special ed director, we have four principals that we met last night in two hours. Academic, we have that pretty well covered, but we're short on, going into the new year, you're going to have two members transitioning into January, Tino and Brian. You need someone that can come in and start working, and not learning how to, the role, learning the politics of it, and the budgeting, and the meetings, and Gus has all that, he's sat through three, four budget negotiations, we need a budget person, we need a money person, and that's what my thought is, to bring someone on that has been in this role, that knows the role, can start immediately, and is a budget person. That's what the Committee is lacking, is the budget part of it. We're strong with the academics on the school side, and that's my saying.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, John?
While I agree with some of what Mr. Delventos has said, we actually did have layoffs last year, there weren't no layoffs. One position, one set of positions that didn't get laid off was the team chairs, and they were on the list of positions to be eliminated until a budget subcommittee meeting with Dr. Callis and Mr. Capiano, where I, because of my special education background, said, actually, we need these team chairs, and I pitched a question to Mrs. Pearson, where she was able to, you know, really reinforce why we needed these, and then Dr. Callis and Mr. Capiano then agreed with me that we should not eliminate those positions. We did eliminate a curriculum director, we did eliminate a kindergarten teacher, so we didn't not lose any positions last year. But I think that my experience with that budget subcommittee meeting speaks to, I was the one person in the room that knew why we needed those positions, and they were going to be cut, they were on the list to be cut, and it would have been, in Mrs. Pearson's words, devastating to her school to have to send a classroom teacher into IAP meetings to chair those meetings. And so while I appreciate the, you know, feelings about needing a numbers person or a money person or a budget person, we have Mr. Perrin, who'll be going into his ninth year on the School Committee, I would say he should be the strongest budget, School Committee budget person in the room at this point in time. Mr. Capiano was the budget subcommittee chairperson for almost two years, the last two years, and Mr. Vecchia, while he'll be switching to the Town Council, that role will also continue him on the School Committee, and Mr. Vecchia has attended several subcommittees and is abreast, I would guess, of the School Committee budget and the town budget as a whole. So while I appreciate some of what people are saying, I would disagree, and I think that I have some valid reasons why. Thank you.
Yes. Brian?
Being told that I'm the strongest in the budget, I have to say that a lot of that strength came through a lot of meetings with Mr. Matucci to learn the budget and to get advice and input, he's been a mentor to me as a school committee member, so I do support him, and I hope you'll do the same.
Councilor Terry.
Oh, no, no, I don't deal with Mr.
President-elect? Go ahead.
I also would like to speak on behalf of Gus Matucci. The example came up about the past budget, his ability to bring people together into a room, town manager specifically, member of the Council, several others, to talk with us, the superintendent schools, about what we needed to do to save positions at the high school or at the, in school department. Maybe we didn't save all of them, but we certainly saved important ones, ESPs and some of the teachers. It's just his, an example of how he can operate, and he is an expert in the budget, there's no doubt about it, and I'm going to support him.
Thank you. Councilor Terry.
First of all, excuse me, I want to thank all six people that put in their names for this position, because I think it's admirable, it's a huge responsibility, and I thank them all. Over the last several years, last year, we lost some positions, one of the other positions that we lost is a curriculum coordinator, and one of the positions that we lost several years ago that we, I believe, backed desperately is a budget manager in some way, shape, or form. So I do agree with Bill, and I agree with Heather, that, you know, I do believe you need an education on the School Committee, it's, you know, kind of by definition, but it's also extremely important to understand the budget and the budgeting process, and there's just so much more to it with grants and such. We're extremely fortunate, I think, that over the next two weeks, we're going to be able to hopefully address a couple of these needs, and fortunate that we're going to have two positions that we're going to be filling. But, you know, I do agree with Bill that, you know, you do need someone that understands the budget in its entirety, it's a twenty-plus million dollar budget, and there's a tremendous amount of little nuances that need to be understood. You also need somebody that understands curriculum, and, you know, hopefully, we're going to be able to, you know, we're talking about budget managers, curriculum coordinators, increased kindergarten teachers, there's, you know, we're just throwing dollars all over the place, and we hope we have the ability to fund it all, and it's just, it's an incredibly hard decision, I think, for all of us. The only solace, I feel, is that we have, we're able to do it again in a couple of weeks. But I just wanted to really thank all the candidates, especially the three that are here and that have been nominated, so I do thank you all for that.
Counselor.
Yeah, I too would like to thank all of the people that applied for the position, because there were some outstanding people. I think I've talked to most of them, and I had very good conversations, and I wish I could vote for three people tonight. But you can't vote for two people, fortunately, I'll be able to vote for two, one tonight and one next month, and if Tino would please resign, I could have three. I don't know if we're going to get that to happen. But beside talking to the candidates, I also talked to some of the School Committee members. I had a long talk with the acting superintendent of schools, who I believe will be the next superintendent of schools, and had quite a conversation with her, and some members of past school committees and past chairman of the School Committee who were there when Mr. Matucci was on the committee and helping with the budget, and they felt that he was a great success at the budget, and they felt that he was what was needed right now, not next month, but now. So I am with Mr. Matucci, because I think he's the person that's needed at this moment. Next month, I hope to put an education in.
Counselor.
I also want to thank everybody, I had a lot of great conversations with a lot of people about the issues that are facing the school, and that's a really near and dear topic to me as a former advocate for kids. But like Tino had said, when I was in high school, I watched a lot of kids whose families were deciding about whether or not they wanted to stay in Winthrop or go to a private school. I was very happy with my choice to stay in Winthrop, but a lot of my friends that I'd grown up with from a very young age, I was not with them when I graduated because of the diastries financially that the town was in. And when Gus and Mary Lou and the two-and-a-half overrides all came together and these campaigns started to get together, I felt like there was some people on our sides. Gus was very accessible even as a high school student, he was someone who I'd go in and ask questions about the budget. There weren't, I'm sure he didn't get a lot of inquiries from students about the school budget, but it was something that I was really interested in, and he always talked to me about it. And over time, from the time when, I think when it was at its low, it got a lot better by the time I graduated, when we started partnering with organizations like Viking Pride to lower the user fees, I think it was $350 when I was a sophomore, got knocked down by the time I was a senior, and that type of involvement that goes back a long, long ways is very valuable to me, and I know Gus is a really great advocate still financially, and that's why I'm going to support him tonight. And I thank you for the opportunity, and for everybody for putting their names on it.
Anything else from the Council of the School Committee? Yes, Counselor.
I'd like to echo the sentiments of my fellow counselors and some members of the School Committee. I think it was an enormously difficult decision for me to come to. I did speak at length to the three nominees that are there in the room, and I would like to say I've known Mr. Matucci for almost forty years, but personally, I have to let my feelings for Mr. Matucci go to the side, and I want to do what I think is best. And given, given the credentials that Ms. Hodge has, I'm going to have to vote for her this evening. And my hat is off to Ms. Swope, she's also equally credentialed, and I hope you put your hat in the ring again in two weeks.
Anything else from the Council of the School Committee? If not, yes.
I'll follow up on a couple of comments. You know, I think that we have, as far as I know, the current School Committee members don't have, you know, experience working in schools or professional training and experience in education, and we need to have that on the School Committee. And we need more than just one token person on the School Committee that has a background in education. So I would submit that we need someone with an education background now and again in January. And I think we have two very well-qualified women who are nominated tonight, both of whom have advanced degrees related to education, and I think it would be a real missed opportunity to forego that expertise.
I too had the opportunity to be on the School Committee for three years prior to my Council attempt. I'm just, okay, let me hand this over. And not one person makes up, whether it's educationally or budgetarily, makes up a School Committee or a Council. It takes a group of people, and you'd be surprised who might rise to the occasion at different points in time. It's important to have a well-balanced School Committee, it's important to have a well-balanced Council, and I've had the opportunity to work with these folks. What makes a difference in a person's nominations or consideration is character, commitment, and consistency, and I think that's what we have to look at with all of the candidates. Whoever happens, and role models, which I think is important, especially on the School Committee. That being said, I thank each one of the candidates, I will congratulate the successful candidate, however, I think we should take a hard look at what we're voting on tonight and as we move the future of Winthrop going forward. Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Counselor Inman, Shawna Hodge. Are we doing the nominations? Are we doing the, I thought we were doing the roll call, I'm sorry.
We have the nominations, yeah. Roll call.
School goes first.
School goes first.
Okay.
So we're doing the nominations now?
No, we're doing.
The nominations are in, now we're doing roll call.
For the nominations.
School Committee first, for the election, this is the election.
Ronald Vecchia.
Gus Matucci.
Valentina Capo Bianco.
Gus Matucci.
William Hogan.
Gus Matucci.
Brian Perrin.
Gus Matucci.
Don Sullivan.
Shawna Hodge Barnett.
Ultra Ingman.
Shawna Hodge Barnett.
Counsel Cala.
Shawna Hodge Burnett.
Counsel Christopher.
Gus Martucci.
Counsel O'Terry.
Gus Martucci.
Counsel Boyagen.
Shawna Hodge Burnett.
Counsel Verone.
Shawna Burnett.
Counsel Dalvento.
Gus Martucci.
Vice President Boncory.
Gus Martucci.
President Sampin.
Suzanne Swolp.
We have eight. Gus Martucci, five for Shawna Hodge Burnett, and one for Suzanne Swolp.
Okay, so that's Gus. Gus Martucci. Congratulations, Mr. Martucci.
And again, thank you to all who considered yourself a candidacy and consider yourself moving forward in January with the new council, the new school. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the joint committee meeting. We'll give a five-minute recess so everybody can either hang out or head out.
All right, we're going to get started. Back to our regular council meeting, returning to open session. We've got a public hearing for $190,000 to fully fund the regional dispatch budget. Anyone would like to be heard on the transfer of $190,000. If not.
Mr. President.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
As well. The planning committee met on this earlier today and voted to move forward the positive recommendation. I don't know if you want the chief to go over a quick brief on it now or when we vote on it, or I can do it myself if me be. Basically, it's the seed money for the regional dispatch. There's reimbursements that come through annually. We have to put up the money before we're getting money back on it. It's part of social tradition in the first year. But if anybody has any questions, we can field it now or later.
There'll certainly be a reoccurring tradition.
Right.
The state 911 grants reimbursed as Counsel Dalvento has said. I checked with the regional dispatch director this morning. He assures me that he has been filing for the refunds in that grant that's going into a separate funding account at the REC Center, and all the reimbursement will have been put in by June 30th as required under the state grant. So, and then the board will vote that back after establishing a reasonable reserve.
So, that'll be coming back up under old business, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Public, yes. I'm going to recognize Karen Chavez for a moment. Yes.
Is this still public health?
No. Public health, yes.
I just, I feel as though the town needs to be more informed about this 911. I understand what the town members are saying. Mr. Dalvento confuses me.
You too?
I think, I think they need to know what our share is, why our share is what it is, and why we did not fund it appropriately for this year. We feel, we, no, I shouldn't say that. We funded appropriately for this year, but then when they did the calculations, it was not enough. I think that the town needs to know these things.
Just to set the record straight, the regional dispatch center did submit a budget to the town manager's office and the CFO prior to our budget season. That budget and documents would reflect the full amount of the budget. The amount put forward was not the full amount that was voted on by the board of directors in their minutes. So, I just wanted to be transparent and clear. I think a calculation was done figuring that those reimbursements would have been received earlier and not based on a reimbursable grant at that time. And that's where you see the difference between, and, you know, off the top of my head, I believe the our share, the Winthrop share, is about $580,000. And then, of course, the reimbursements would set it down lower than that based on the 911 allocations to regional dispatches for that year. But I can provide all those documents. I'd certainly be happy to. And post it up on our website under plans, reviews, and presentations for anyone's review.
Okay.
In other words, if it's $585,000, that is what we should pay, not what we anticipate getting out.
That's what we should budget.
That's what I mean.
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And there's a few other moving parts in that, and that is with the special, well, special funds been set up for, the action ambulance money, because we now dispatch for action ambulance. That money goes into that account to help offset the 290, I mean, the 590, I want to say the 280, I don't want to make up a number, please, but I want to say it's $285,000 or something like that, the dispatch money we get from action.
$48,000.
$48,000?
We built up that account over the years, and that was first used to offset the initial budget expenses.
Okay. So, that money goes into it, but what's needed is the seed money that we thought was going to be reimbursed. It was going to be part of a grant, but it's a reimbursable grant, so you have to lay it out first and get it back. And the thing we all have to remember on this also is, this has put an extra firefighter and a police officer on the street. We don't have to leave anybody back, back at the station to answer the phone. So, we've actually picked up 24/7 another person on every shift, but the police hand fire. So, there is a win-win with the money. The money's not just calling out to answer the phones.
Thank you. Anything else? Public comment? For public hearing, if not, we're closing. Now, we're into public comment. Any public comment? Yes.
Hey, everyone.
Just identify yourselves.
I'm Jean, Jean Coughlin from Precinct Five.
I know you, but.
From Frigman Flyer, once in a while. Anyway, I'm back tonight to ask if there's been any modification of progress made in removing of the 11 residences that look like they're in the Center Business District. I know that I've expressed my feelings before that I think all residents should be out of the Center Business District. I also just want to know if the new town planner has any thoughts on the development. Has he been informed of this problem or been able to look at it, maybe to reevaluate it? The Center Business District master plan and the middle school feasibility study that's on the website dated April 4, 2014. And also, the parking spaces for the minimum amount of money of $2,000 only open to developers as he addressed that to maybe repeal that process. I and many other residents are concerned and troubled over the issue and the methodology and strategy of placing our homes in the CBD if it is sold. This puts us at risk and jeopardize our homes, and it gives such an advantage to developers who can go up to 48 feet to buildings that are next door to very small little homes and by parking. I also question how it could be changed to include my house along with others, no notification, consideration, or acknowledgement of a public hearing or meeting. Everything, I feel, is done kind of secretly, even though I know they said it was posted. I just haven't been able to find those postings from 2014. I would have to, I think, go to the library to get it. The town website doesn't go back that far. But I have been asking for months, and I've been told, and I know people say they're thinking all the time of me. I hope they say they haven't forgotten me. Their lawyers are going to look into the lines. They don't know how accurate lines are, and that I'm in their mental notes. I'll have to know a mail, and I still don't have the answer. So, I know that the full, you know, I thank you all for your service, and we're going to start a new year with a new town council, and I know that there's concerns and issues. We've passed on to everyone. These, you know, these exist, and we have that, I have very big concern about it, and hopefully, we can all work on a resolution. So, I'm hoping that that will happen. So, I ask that you be careful in lowering your standards, encouraging development that's too large for the character of our neighborhood with current parking issues. So, I ask everyone to just, do you please do the job and represent us, the job that you've been elected to do, and communicate with the residents of Winthrop through notifications to abouters and notice of public hearings, and thank you for listening. I hope you all have a nice holiday, and thank you for your patience.
You too, Jean. Thank you. I will tell you, although this is not back and forth, I know the town manager, the planner, the assessors have all been working with some of the concerns that have been brought forward by the neighborhood. So, and they're going to filter that information and get it back to all of you going forward. So, they are working on it.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
And my report as well.
And, yeah.
Thank you all.
It'll be coming up under the town manager's report. Okay?
Very good. Thank you all.
Yes, Larry.
Yeah, my name is Larry Solucy. I don't usually come to a lot of this, but I'm giving some information about a tree in front of the middle school that obviously you guys know belongs to my son, late son. The new owners of the building, whoever it may be or whatever you decide you're going to put there, they might not want to be. Understand them. The word I hear is that there could be a $40, $500 cost in moving that tree to a location to be determined by probably myself, my family, you guys, school committee, that guy, all that kind of stuff. I know you guys have a lot of great intentions in this thing. You know, you've given this family, my family, a lot of support. But I'm really concerned about moving that tree. If, let's say, if something should happen to it, like it won't grow, I can't guarantee you what I'll do, how I'll react, because it means an awful lot to me and to my family. So, I don't know if there's anything new that you can tell me, what's going to happen in front of that building. Do they want to keep that tree there? You know, I mean, plant's got to be, all bronze has got to be removed by probably Reggie Horn and his people. They have to cement it in, and there's wires running underneath. I don't know if you know it, but there's, there's wires in the back of the tree. To the left of the doors, there's a small sensor. If you threw a glove over it in the middle of the day, you'd have power. And we had a lot of power with the light when it first became, when the kids were over there, they trampled on it above candlelight, so we stopped doing it. But there is power there. It's all covered over now with dirt, so maybe it can be, I think, our miller had covered up the box. I just want to express to you my concern about moving that tree. I'm not, I'm not saying that it won't be moved to a good location, someplace near the new middle school, because that's the last place that Michael was, is in the middle school. So, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make any sense to go anywhere else. So, I appreciate your consideration as to what you're going to do there. And you have to notify me personally, you know, who lives in town, what you're going to do, and then I can get together with you.
Larry, I know that how important that tree is to you and once for Michael after his passing, and a lot of us were part of that class and our children.
You're all there.
So, we know. I can guarantee you this. I mean, there were some considerations about moving it over to the middle school just to, out of respect and remembrance of Michael. So, but nothing's been decided yet. There are no new owners yet of the school, and we're not sure where that's going to go. But I can guarantee you from this council, whether I'm here or not, that people will be paying attention to that for you and your family.
Jerry Sari was supposed to meet me here. I don't know why he didn't come, because he was willing, you know, Jerry.
Yeah, sure.
He bought the tree.
Right, that's right.
And the tree was the most disgusting little thing.
Right.
We looked at everybody and said, what the hell, did you spend money on this thing? And they said, just wait, let it grow. And it grew, and then, you know, the, I think the explorers, Frankie Scott was people. They trimmed it.
Right, that's right.
They had the bucket truck, and they put the lights on. So, there's a lot of great activity.
Absolutely.
But, so, I mean, that's all I need to say. If there's anything you need me to do, I'll be available.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you. Absolutely, yes. Counsel Val.
So.
Mr. Solucy?
Yes.
Yeah, Linda just wanted to make.
Larry, just to reiterate, because we've talked about this, you and I, about the tree. And I have spoken to the memorial committee. I think that's where the $4,500 came from because of the size of that tree.
I didn't know there was a memorial committee.
There is. And that would be, you know, it's quite expensive to, you know, uproot that and to relocate that.
Right now, it's at its peak. It's 16 feet. It's not going to go anymore.
Not going to go anymore. So, I have spoken to the superintendent of schools, and she's on board. Memorial's committee's on board. Council would certainly support moving the tree to an area near the new middle school.
Yeah.
There is always a chance. No one can ever guarantee that that tree might not take, might not catch. I mean, that's, that is a possibility, but there's also a possibility that, you know, it could get diseased or something else could happen to it. You never know.
Sure is, yeah.
But, but the thing is that a lot of that young group, that was Michael's age, which my son included, they all, as soon as we know what's happening to the middle school, as soon as we know, you know, that tree does have to go, right now, we don't know that yet.
Yeah.
But if we do, the kids are all willing to rally and do a GoFundMe account on Facebook.
Yeah, I'm here.
We'll get the money raised. Don't worry about the money. We'll get the money raised somehow.
I'm not worried about it. I mean, I pay for it myself. I'm worried about the benefit of the tree itself.
I know, I know.
It's been rooted now for 16 years in that spot, and it's used to the soil, the environment, the water, whatever it is. If it were to go someplace else where it might not be, the ground might not be as good, could, that could be a problem. So, I don't know. Well, across that step, we'll come to it.
I guess that's what we'll have to do. But you know what? We are aware of it, and it'll be, it'll be taken care of one way or the other.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you all. Thanks, Larry.
Thanks, Larry. Sorry, aggressive, buddy.
Thank you, pal.
Public comment. Anything else from public comment? If not, we'll move to correspondence. And obviously, we've had a lot of correspondence regarding the position at the school committee level. I don't know if anybody else has anything else to add to that. If not, we'll move on to committee reports.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Before committee reports, do we want to vote a minute?
I'm sorry. Yes, thank you, Counsel. We, motion to accept the minutes of December 5.
December 5.
As circulated, motion been made. Second?
Abstained.
Abstained. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Counsel. Pleasure. You've always helped me right along, buddy. Correspondents, okay. Committee reports, economic development. Counsel Inman?
Sure. We had the Center Business District stakeholder meeting on the evening of December 7th at the E.V. Newton at 7:00. There were, it was well-attended by both residents and business owners in the Center Business District. Talked about primarily about the upcoming infrastructure project, and I think there were two primary concerns there. One is the need to have a meeting probably with Steve Cala to talk about the timing of the construction, what to expect. I know we're still in the preliminary phases of that, but that's something to look at hopefully for January. And then, we also talked about the need to, for all of us to have a better understanding about zoning in the Center Business District. And my recommendation would be to, that we put together a, some sort of a presentation or a workshop about zoning that we actually have in place for the Center Business District so that we're all on the same page and can clear up some of the misunderstandings and rumors about how that works.
Thank you. Millfield Committee, Counsel O'Terry.
Millfield, whole committee did not meet, but the finance committee, subcommittee, and the construction subcommittee did meet. A lot of it was going over the success we feel we had with the initial game for Thanksgiving. There were a couple of issues that we addressed shortly after that game, I think, with the curb cuts, which, we had a couple of issues with the curb cut going into the main gate, and we had a curb cut at the away gate. Since then, we had, I think the curb cut at the away gate has been eliminated, and we have the curbing now there, and the slope for the curb cut at the main gate has been addressed and fixed by the time being. Everything, we feel, went really well. There were a couple of little items that we think we have to address, but everything seems to be on par, and we will be having a full meeting, I believe, this Thursday.
The 11th.
The 11th. No.
The 11th of January.
11th of January, right. And, but we feel, you know, we felt a big relief once Thanksgiving was over, and we were very happy to be able to provide that to the town for that game, and everything else seems to be going well.
Good. Thank you, Counsel.
They haven't voted on the architect yet. The, we have the piece for the architect to do in, and the construction people are going to meet on the 4th, and then they're going to interview on the 8th and bring it to us on the 11th.
The architects for the, for the fieldhouse will be reported to us. Okay, great. Finance Committee, Counsel Dalvento.
The council finance committee met earlier today, and President and myself and Counsel O'Terry, as well as Counsel Inman and Town Treasurer, I believe that's your title, Biz Zaleski. The two items on the agenda was the $190,000 transfer to the dispatch center. Biz presented it, and there was a discussion about the benefits of dispatch and the Biz presented it, and there was a discussion about the benefits of dispatch and the use of the seed money. Ended up being councilor Terry motioning, making a motion, and I seconded it to recommend positive action to the full council, and I thought it was unanimous. Also, there was a motion for, there was an item for twenty thousand, seventeen dollars and sixty cents for the authorization prior spending for legal services. That would come from the current town manager's budget from fiscal eighteen. And that was, that motion by councilor Terry to move forward to the full council, I seconded it as unanimous vote on that action also. And that's the report. Thank you.
Town manager's report?
Thank you, and I just wanna start off by, since this will be the majority of the board's final meeting, thank you all for your service and support during my interim period. And it's certainly sometimes contentious to run for election and then hold the seat for as long as many as you have. So we certainly appreciate your dedication, your volunteerism, and your loyalty to the town government. So thank you all for that. Just a way of an update is DBW has notified me that they had five plow and saw trucks taken out of service yesterday by the Department of Transportation under the new inspectional guidelines. Most of these trucks are eighteen to twenty years old. They have rot on their chassis as well as their body, which is no longer permissible under the new standards that were enacted this year. Myself and Director Calla have been in conference yesterday and today about a, certainly a method that'll hold us together to get through the initial snowstorms here locally. And we're in contact with some vendors and also some rental companies that we might have to execute on. But I just certainly want everyone to be aware of that. Director Calla is well in control of the situation. He will have a fleet of trucks in some capacity in some way here, ready to fight any storm that hits Winthrop. So as we move forward, we'll certainly keep you up to date on our progress and what the remedy is gonna be. It just, the DBW kept on hitting me the last two weeks. The gas pumps have gone out of service. So we're using a local gas company vendor at this time to supply gas services to all our fleet vehicles, including police, fire, and DBW trucks, senior center, and schools. We have a leaky tank problem issue underground. The estimated repair is thirty-eight thousand dollars. Director Calla, again, will be submitting to our insurance carrier to see if this is, can be handled by insurance proceeds. Or if not, at least make them aware of it so as we start to dig. If we come into any type of environmental concern, they're aware of it and can act and help us mitigate any circumstances moving forward. So we get some expenses coming up that certainly we're gonna have to adjust as we move through this new year. Lucky for the new president.
We have to clean the land as well.
Yeah, well, we'll see how, you know, we'll see the extent. Once we start digging, right now, we don't know. So if that's the case, and we still have responsibilities under twenty-one, chapter twenty-one, to clean that appropriately.
Do we have, are any of the five trucks that were put out of service worth repairing? Or do we have any estimates?
The smaller ones, we're looking into that now. The two larger trucks, anything to do with the rotten chassis, no one wants to touch. They won't even give us a quote or a price. They're not willing to accept the liability to weld a chassis together. So, you know, most of the recommendations has been replace the entire cab of the trucks, which at that point, you're getting the cost prohibitions because all the wiring that goes into the plows and everything else, it's gotta be rewired. So that point, you're at almost a price of, three-quarters of a price of a new truck. So that's all the price pointing that we're doing now and to get a report from Director Calla to myself, so we can evaluate that and find out what's the best method to go.
Is the sender, or are we able to...
Our new sender is in, and it's currently at York Ford with a four-wheel drive problem. We're hoping that will be...
It's currently at Corkford.
Look, I'm sorry.
When we bought that vehicle last year, it was a... The vehicle didn't come with four-wheel drive. They don't at that size. We had to have the four-wheel drive installed by another contractor. Ford did it for us when we got that vehicle. From the get-go, there was a vibration in the, you know, in the four-wheel drive unit. It's all under warranty, but of course, it's kinda hit us at a bad time. I just wanted to step back. We will, it's due to be serviced on December twenty-sixth. They anticipate about a week's worth of downtime, and then they'll have it back to us as soon as possible. I just wanted to step back on the older vehicles. The two large sawthers, the three large sawthers that were rejected in this last inspection are nineteen ninety fours. And the reason it's difficult to get a company to work on these fully-loaded vehicles, you know, they accept about five tons of saw each, which is about fifteen thousand pounds, so fully loaded. So it's not something, again, like the chief spoke to, they... Nobody wants to take the liability of those wells. Nor, once you start working on a chassis of a vehicle, it often leads to re-titling the vehicle because of modifications. So you're changing gross weights and things to that nature, and you have to... So there's a process. I don't think the money that would cost to repair these vehicles, being, you know, twenty-two years old, is money well spent. We probably could do a repair to them potentially. We would never have them back in time for this year. But maybe you get another year out of them or two. It's time to really start considering the replacement of these. Now, we did replace the other one. They do go at about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So we are looking into the option of, you know, is it, you know, several options, which I'll leave up to the chief. We're, you know, looking at contracting, else, salting events, and seeing kinda where the money takes us. So we are, so with all the options at this point, it's probably gonna either be some sort of rental or contracting, else, salting events for the remainder of this year. And we'll know better after tomorrow. We have a few discussions with contractors as to potential cost to that.
Right. Council Breyajin?
With the new regulations at the state, do they have any funding attached to help mitigate what it's done to us?
No. At my understanding, there is associations of C.L. drivers associations that are unhappy. These are for all C.L. vehicles. It's not just affecting us as the town, but private corporations as well. So they're petitioning for relief. And certainly, I'll talk to MMA to see what we can do to provide some relief as well. But again, I think the union has expressed concern and interest about these rejections. And through Director Calla, it made it clear that the primary concern is for their safety and the safety of our pedestrians, and that we wouldn't put anyone into a vehicle that was not roadworthy. And that has to be our commitment to the public as well as to our employees.
Yes. Just a question for both Director Calla and yourself. If we placed an order as soon as possible, when would a delivery be for new vehicles?
Unfortunately, from our last purchase of this type of vehicle, it was eight months turnaround.
Just in time for next season.
Exactly.
Amazing.
So we'll have a short-term plan and a long-term plan. And when we approach, we have the right data sets and numbers for your consideration.
Great, thank you.
Center Business District zoning update. We've been working hard. We certainly had the planner in this morning for a couple hours in my office. You know, we're starting and taking this really way back to when the Center Business District was first developed and enacted in ordinance. And we're back to about nineteen ninety right now, and it goes further back. And then how it has changed moving forward over the years through articles of town meeting, to the most current edition of the 2014 amendments in July twenty-second, 2014. Then, once we know, we, through the good graces of your clerk, has been doing research and how it was advertised, where were the minutes, what was the transcript postings like, and get copies of that. True to similar report I've done on the ferry and the traffic, everything will be attached to this report. The second thing is then to determine meets and bounds. And was there a meets and bounds ever determined for the Center Business District? You know, right now, we don't, we can say we can't find them. So that zoning dictates if there's no meets and bounds, to go to the zoning map. We checked that zoning map, and our zoning map does not have lines drawn in to districts and not overlaid in that fashion. So then we go old-fashioned field cards, and we pull field cards for the residential neighbors and the building that abuts them. And we're in the process of that now. I can tell you, we did review several of these homes, and they clearly on the field card are residentials and marked residentials, encoded residentials. We have to pull their deeds and to see if there's a recording on top of the deed that would supersede the assessor record. My gut feeling is there isn't, but that's another step we're taking. Once we compile this report, we will share this report with our attorneys as well as our planner to make sure and then determine what the boundaries, outlines are. If the zoning boundary line, the zoning laws have said that if there is two districts that abut each other, it's the center line and the property lines of that district. So that, obviously, if there's still, they're marked residential, and the abutting properties are either a CB, which I can tell you that they're not CB, they're on the assessor's field card, they're marked as commercial use or mixed use under the assessor's code. So we're flushing all this out. It's not a quick process. We're doing it in between meetings and other issues that we have coming up. So we hope by the middle to end of January, we'll have a completed report to our attorneys, that we have, then we'll get clearance back that, yes, we did everything correctly. And then be able to sit with those neighbors and give them some comfort of mind that really where they are. And then I think it's our job to go back out and say, what's in that district? Was it recorded properly? And how do we record it properly before we can move forward on the developments? So we're moving as quickly as we can. There's a lot of data that our lawyers don't have access to on a daily basis. It's easier for me and my staff to go around collecting that data locally, articulate it in a form, attach it, and send it. A little bit cheaper as well. But, you know, we agreed this morning that my approach and the way I have laid it out, the planner is exactly the way that she thought it should be laid out. And the assessor agreed that that's exactly the way he thought it should be laid out. So we got a plan together, and we got a rough draft of a report, and we'll get it done.
Yes, council.
Kerry?
Yes, sir.
When we passed that Center Business District bylaw that rezoning for the Center Business District, they weren't, we did not put any mets and bows, and I know that we didn't.
No.
But there was a map that was attached to it. And the map had drawn outlines and an outline, which did go up some of the side streets from the center. It went all the way up, almost, I think, to my house on Buchanan Street. And that was included in that line that had Center Business District. I don't know where that map is now, but I'm sure...
The map is attached. It's attached to seventeen fifty.
Yeah, okay.
And we're digging, and M.A.P.C. developed that map, and we requested all documents that they based that map on. And we have a clear response, but we have communications with Denise, who's taking charge on that, so again...
Others have found that map, I do.
Yeah, yeah.
Council Kristol?
To the best of your knowledge, were there any changes to the boundaries of what the Center Business District was in 2014? Or is that the same as it was prior?
I have gone back to the old code book, the general code book, where they had section one forty-five dash twelve. There's been no change to the boundary and markers from the old code, from one forty-five, all the way through the most current edition.
So the only change that was made was to what was allowable within the zone, correct?
Yes, under seventeen fifty. And it got its own chapter in 2014, and it laid out specifics as that. I just see two people are celebrating birthdays this week in this room. Council Breyajin, from my understanding, is celebrating a birthday, and Ms. Jarvis.
Celebrating.
Or is it?
Karen.
Karen is also celebrating, from what people have told me, so I wanna wishful to them.
Karen doesn't look happy about it.
Very happy birthday. I saw the look. The phone service is back up and fully running. We had some problems with it first thing Monday morning. We did notify the people that we were here. We could be reached by email. It wasn't a full outage, it was just certain offices. So, but we're back fully operating. And the fire chief is working on a press release on winter hazards and how to stay safe during the holiday season. And the senior center's rooftop air handler is having difficulties or problems. The replacement cost of that is ten thousand dollars. We'll be looking for a funding mechanism for the new council to vote on that. And of course, the SRF loan, do you wanna...
Why you bring it up?
Yeah, SRF loan from the state has authorized us four-point-nine million dollars on the SRF loan for the Center Business Infrastructure Project. That is a two percent interest rate. It's a much lower rate than our bonds. Our bonds are right now a three-point-seven-five interest rate. So we'll be, you know, as we, you gotta realize on the loans, they come out of our operating budget, unless we go for a debt explosion or an override, which we try not to do. So we've got a really, I heard earlier from people in the school committee that they need, they have needs. The town obviously has needs with DBW and the senior center. And then we wanna get this project done. So priorities, budgeting priorities, we gotta start thinking that now. I already started thinking about the budget, and we have the province issue submitting their budgets early January, so we can get early start on the budget, so we can really line up funding and also for the operating side as well as our loans side, so. It was very exciting, because it's a low interest rate. But, you know, we gotta work on the funding mechanisms, I think we can do it.
Good. A lot of our work through your office and with Joe.
Yeah, with everyone. Steve Calla and Art from Woodton County are all helping in getting realistic costs to what this project really is gonna cost the town.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, that would conclude my report, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. School committee update. I was, I had a wake I had to attend last night, so I wasn't able to. Does the council or whatever like to bring us up to speed?
Sure.
Appreciate it.
The exciting part of the evening was a presentation by all of the school principals regarding the MCAS testing. And very happy to report that there has been improvement across the school district, specifically in the high school, in English and in math. In English, Winthrop was number ten in the state in improvement over the previous year. And in math, sixth in the state in improvement over the, out of all the four hundred school districts in the state. So that was quite an achievement, and I'd like to recognize the principals and the teachers for doing an excellent job. They should really come a long way. We also honored Ben Holden, who's been twelve years of experience, on the school committee, and Don Salvo as well.
Thank you. Next, we have old business. Town council established a public safety building committee, feasibility public safety committee. We talked about it being seven folks. Council Calla, we kinda put that on hold last time, because you were out with your shoulder issue. And I think the chief is still going through that process relative to...
In Monica, we'll have all the architects right after Christmas Eve, so we can report back the following.
And I'm not sure what kind of input we've had from people who are interested. Denise, I don't know if you have any?
We have one.
One, okay. So I think what's happening with this time of year and with the evaluation going on, maybe the new council will entertain that going forward in 2018 in the direction of going back here.
Question about the public safety building. What, could you provide an update on the R and Q process and what...
Sure. After the last meeting, we asked Chief Fleenigan in Monica to amend the scope of that. So that's the amendment that was sent back out. And then after Christmas, I believe, the procurement office is having them in. And then we'll be able to give you a full update the next week.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Next, under old business is transfer a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. A motion, I moved at the town council transfer from the general stabilization fund the amount of a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars to fully fund the regional dispatch budget for the end of the fiscal year 2018, or take...
2018, or take any other action there too. I believe that came out with a positive recommendation, counsel?
Yes, it did.
No second is needed. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes?
Do we need a roll call?
Do we need a roll call?
Yes, we do.
Thank you, Denise.
Counselor Engman?
Yes.
Counselor Callow?
Yes.
Counselor Christopher?
Yes.
Counselor Terry?
Yes.
Counselor Boyajin?
Yes.
Counselor Verone?
Yes.
Counselor Delbento?
Yes.
Archbishop Boncorie?
Yes.
President Sampit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next thing is to authorize $20,000. Motion, I move that this town council vote to authorize unpaid bills for the prior year to be paid from current year departmental budgets as noted below, or take any other action there too. Again, that comes out of finance with a positive recommendation. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next thing is a middle school, Winthrop Middle School site rezoning recommendation, economic development citizens advisory committee, or and/or the planning board, and I believe it's the planning board. And I'll read the paragraph they had sent to each one of us. The Winthrop Planning Board recommends that the Winthrop Town Council respectfully grant additional time to review the zoning options as it relates to the currently community goals for the middle school parcel. The zoning options discussed to date have been Senate Business District, Chapter 40I, special development overlay, SDOD, or not take any, would not provide any solution to the current form. The planning board will seek additional time to conduct a research, outline the design guidelines, and seek further public input on how to best use these zoning options and how they could be altered, and/or applied to the site in part or as a whole to achieve community goals. So that's been put on hold, and they're going to do some further research. Anything, Terry?
Well, I think it's just important that we have developers out there waiting for the zoning to be classified, and we can't, you know, move or even go to an RFP process to see what's out there and who wants to develop what until this is zoned. I believe, if I remember correctly, it's been in planning since August.
Quite a while.
So every meeting, and we've given them a numerous amount of extensions, and at some point, I think the, you know, the council should have to advise them that there be no further continuances, and to make a decision if they can't make one on, based on the knowledge we've supplied, four legal opinions to the planning board on this one particular issue. You know, where it could be for development or public safety use was one specific question that was researched by our lawyers. So, you know, certainly it's a prerogative, but we do have developers out there, and before they walk away, we should try to move and planning board should try to come to an agreement of some type of decision, so we can actually do the RFP process and see what we get back, and, you know, what income potentially potentials are there for us, public safety versus recreational, that we can't get there for the council if we don't have a zoning type.
Yes, Counselor Boyajin. Has the new city planner given their input on?
She has not. We've had shown her the legal opinions, and she thought the legal opinions were in line and adequate for consideration. And it's stepped through each zoning, each zoning type and stuff. So Janelle Austin from KMP Law has provided those.
Anything else from the council? If not, Solz, yeah, Counselor Vice President.
I just don't know how much time we can limit them to. I mean, I think they have an obligation, in most cases, to get something back to us in 40 days. And, you know, maybe we should respond to this letter with a request that they have this done by our second meeting in February, the very latest, and then from that time, we'd be no further continuing to.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. This has been ongoing for two weeks.
I was going to recommend the first weekend, the first meeting in February, but I wasn't sure if we should wait until the first meeting in January to ask them for that with the new council. But I agree that we have to, you know, they're asking us for an extension of time, they're not asking for a specific extension of time, but we need to, this needs to come to a final resolution.
Yeah.
So I would make a motion that we ask them to respond to us by the first meeting in February.
I'll second that motion. Seconded, all in favor on the motion going to the planning board, having it brought back to the council's second meeting?
First.
First meeting in February. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion?
I think it would be helpful also if the city planner could meet with the planning board in January and walk through what some of the current zoning options are, as well as the legal opinion, I think some of that planning expertise might help inform some of the understanding on the board.
We can coordinate that. Denise, do you know when the next planning?
Okay, anything else? Next thing on the agenda under old business is Soul Smart Designation Residential Energy Systems. Recommendation from the planning board, just, I see the, some of the documentation, I don't know if it gives us a recommendation, does it?
Yes. Wait, wait.
They recommend a change here.
Very interesting. Okay, yeah, here we go.
Ms. President?
Yes.
I think we need two things on that, I'm not sure if we want to refer to rules or not, but it also needs a public hearing. Okay.
I would make a motion to refer it to rules and then.
Second.
It's that term of view.
Right.
All right, and then we can have a public hearing then. Yes. But it will be a while, because both my members of Rosarosa are leaving the council.
So we brought on that motion.
We need a second.
We did. Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries.
So referring it in, I'm sorry.
Referring it in a public hearing, yes. Update on the fire station, we just heard from the chief, approved councilor's question. New business, town council votes to transfer the use of retained earnings harbor under the waterways amount of $95,000.
Motion to refer to finance.
Motion to refer to finance, second? Yes, counselor.
Just a discussion, is there any reason that we should vote this this evening? I know that the harbor master is particularly interested in a new boat, and there was some, is there a time constraint?
Well, you, you know, don't forget, it's about eight weeks before these funds become available for use after it's voted here at councils, so it takes that long to, you've got to wait for the next meeting to get the minutes approved, and then finance has to get their line, you know, edit their notes and move the money. So it's six to eight weeks typically to move something like this. I know the RFP is out for the specific regulations, and we want to get it up and running by March.
Right.
To be honest with you, because our ferry is going into service earlier this year than past years. So we want to have the harbor masters in the water at the same time our ferry is in the water, and to coordinate that, it's going to take some time.
Yeah, and there was some concern about that piece of equipment we've acquired someplace else, another community.
Yeah, and they, yeah, we're looking for other communities to take over the Parker, so the money is replenished quickly, entered the reserve account, and then the UASC money will be available early, early mid-January.
Thank you. So you don't feel as though there's a need?
I still have a motion.
No, no, motion to refer to finance. Motion to make the vote of finance, okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Town council declare 2005 Parker Harbor master boat surplus.
Thank you, sir. Ms. President?
Yeah.
Do we want to wait until we get the funding in place for the other vessel before we surplus this one, or does it matter?
That way we won't lose the boat if we don't find it.
Yeah, you know, surplusing it doesn't mean we have to get rid of it, but the action's on the books, so we can float it once the funding is approved, so the other community can get it ready for their start of the year. So having it on the surplus list doesn't mean we have to get rid of it, we still can use it in the interim period, but it'll be ready for surplus once the other boat hits Winthrop.
So that being said, I'll move that the town council declare that that surplus, the 2005 Parker Harbor patrol vessel, number G6G6X-1008982, hereby authorizing the treasurer collective posted for sale. Will the approved auction side take any other action there too?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion can be made by Counselor Vice President, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion's been made. Public comment.
We can update on the town manager search committee?
Sure.
Because that should be listed on the committees, I think, but just so we know what's going on, what's going to change, and how long it's going to be.
Yeah, we had the opportunity, first of all, the Collins Center brought, had 11 folks who were, had applied for the position. Out of those 11 folks, I believe we had two people who we considered for the town manager position. One of those folks were from Minneapolis, they took a private sector job, and the second was a Hanover interim town manager, and I felt it appropriate to bring Joe Darmalovitz into consideration. So as I said before the election, I thought it was important that the new president-elect was part of this process. We had the opportunity, Ron, myself, along with Terry, to sit down with two of the candidates, who, and Joe being one of them, who we found very qualified. However, I think what was important for the new council and the new council president is to make sure we did the search as far and as wide as we could. That being said, Collins Center, under the direction of the council president, as well as maybe some other considerations, will be going out for another search come January. This is a timely part of the year when people are busy with other things, and, you know, I suggested that the folks who have been considered before put their name back in, and that will fall under the umbrella of the new council president, as well as the new council, so. If that gives you enough of an update, that's where, anything, council president, would you like to add?
I've said it all.
Okay, thank you. Again, public comments, do we have any public comments?
Just to get on the public safety side, not, you know, copying my counterpart, but on behalf of the fire department, you know, I was hoping there was a thing going back through the years, but whether it was the Armageddon that was supposed to come on the Belle Isle Bridge, we'd seen all that was coming, parking bans that were in excess of 30 days, and, you know, something as simple as the staging on the water park. I'd like to thank the council for always, you know, we didn't always 100% agree, but I think we always did what was best for the residents. And I thank you for the support you gave to the fire department over my 10 years, and thank you.
Thank you, chief. And I too, I'm going to let the council comment in a minute.
I just want to open two things. First thing, I will wish everyone, happy holiday season, and how they celebrate. And second, I just neglected to mention the playgrounds that were brought up at the last public comment session. We did have a very good meeting with the inspector in my office, she's working with Sean and the superintendent of schools on the coming school playground, and contacting the vendors and seeing what we can replace and what we need to repair. So that process is moving forward. I just wanted to thank you.
And if I could, I'll try to do this as best I can, I want to thank Counselor Verone, Boyajin, and Delbento for all their work as they retire into their private sector jobs. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve all of you. I served on the original council with President Riley, and have served with Jeff Turco, Bob Driscoll, and Peter Gill. This council and those before us have always worked hard for the town, as will the upcoming council will. As leaders, we had to make decisions. Those decisions were sometimes difficult, some brought cheers and some brought jeers. But through it all, we always tried to do what was right for the town of Winthrop. I want to thank all of my fellow councils and my friends, and thank the town manager and their staff, and all the employees who work for Winthrop. But most of all, thank you, people out there. You've been supportive, and you've been our friend. Happy, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and goodwill to all of you. Thank you.
Yes.
I was going to write this out, and I've been telling the story to myself so long it kind of just going to wing it. 12 years ago, a bunch of us got elected to be the first council in this town, and I tell people, at the time was appropriate, at the time now it's really, doesn't have the same weight, but it was kind of like Iraq. Half the town wanted, half the town didn't. We got this little yellow book, we got seven weeks to set up a government. And January 3rd, you know, the town changed, went from the town of Winthrop to a city known as the town of Winthrop, and Selectman were gone, and there were nine counselors who, all of a sudden, we had to figure, we had to figure out what to do. And hire a town manager, and set a lot of precedent, how things were going to happen, and how the change was going to happen, how the town services were going to be affected, and it worked. We had a lot of growing pains, we hired a town manager who was here for a few years. I think we're the first community in the Commonwealth to ever lay off a police chief. Terry?
No comment.
We had the nine C cuts, we were, all of a sudden, in a matter of weeks, we found ourselves a half a million dollars in the hole in a budget, and we had to make that up, and citizens finance commission stepped up, and town stepped up and did a two and a half override, and we'd get things back going. And it really came to a head two weeks ago, I was at the Rock of Ages show at the high school. And we had built two schools already in this town, and we were always nickel and dime and everything. This town has never done anything, you know, top shelf. And I'm sitting in that auditorium, which is a million dollar auditorium, and I'm saying to myself, I can't believe we actually built this thing. But you think back, and it came through, I think partly because of us, you know, a little bit of bragging. We stood confidence in the government, and we're arguing, not arguing today, but there's a lot of discussion about different items today. 10 years ago, those items weren't even discussable, because we didn't have the money for them. We've put ourselves in a great financial spot, and we have more money than the bank that we've ever had, which saved us, you know, $8 million in interest on the high school, high school, middle school. So there's things that happen, and I just want to see that continue to grow. I want, you know, Linda, Russ, Phil, and Jimmy, my original members, and Joe Farino, Tom Riley, and Dick Gill were the other original counselors, and I think it's time to go. I've had, I've spent a 12-year sentence, and I think it's, my time is up. But I do, I do have a lot of encouragement, I see Counselor Engman and Christopher down there, and I think we have a good generation to turn it over to, I'm glad that they're here. A big thing that we had, you know, five, six, seven years ago, is we couldn't get young people involved. Everybody said we were, you know, a bunch of old white guys, yeah, because nobody else wanted to do it. I couldn't get anybody to run against me four years ago, I tried. So I really think the town is better, it's better run, it's professionally run, financially we're making progress, the school and town walls have been torn down, we work as one together, if there's a problem, everybody jumps in and solves it. But I really, and this one other person I really have to thank, she's back there, and you can tell the story, it's a little embarrassing, a little, my daughter. One of the reasons I was allowed to run was one of my proud, it was one of my proudest moments. I made a deal with her, she didn't want me to run, because there's a lot of pressure put on our families, people don't realize what impacts our families have when we take these positions. And the deal I made with her was, when she graduated high school, Winthrop by, I got to hand her her diploma. And that was something that was actually really important to both of us, that was a deal breaker, that's what actually got me my third term, she wasn't going to let me run. I want to thank my daughter Alicia, my wife Kathy, and all you folks, I mean, we've had a great time together, ups and downs, we've been through, you know, snowstorms, budget cuts, good times and bad, but, you know, the town is taking a good spot. Beautiful athletic facility, and I still can't believe we got that high school built. I really can't. I never thought this town would ever do anything, we did it top shelf, and we, you know, got new furniture, it's always been, you know, duct tape and used furniture from somewhere else, and we really did it, and I think that's my proudest thing that I can say about where we are now. Thank you, everybody else.
I'd just like to thank the councils that I've worked with, past and present. We don't always get, agree on where we're headed, but I think collectively we make good decisions. I'd like to thank also the professional staff that Winthrop has.
I'd like to thank also the professional staff that Winterford has. I certainly think they're an asset to all of us. And most importantly, the people that have approached me over the last eight years and have been very supportive and encouraging, I'd like to thank them too. And the only thing I can ask is that they stay engaged and let their counselors know what they think, because we can't read minds. Thank you very much, all of you.
Short and sweet. I mean, I learned a lot about how sausage is made, you know, and so, and I want to thank the counselors for putting up with my behavior at times, and I'm looking forward to continuing to see the, actually, the citizens in the town engaged, and actually, that's been the most exciting thing this year, is to see all the new faces that have been exciting to run. And I'm looking forward to see where the new council brings us in the coming years. Good luck.
And in case you didn't know where the point studies came from, I brought those for each one of the council today. I want to wish again happy holidays.
Thank you. I just want to say and reiterate some of the things that Nick said, because I forgive this at the beginning as well. And this is a very emotional and sad, like, that friends that have been on this council since the very beginning of the trust, and now leaving the council. And Paul and Rich, who haven't been on council since the very beginning, but have contributed so much to this council. Paul and Nick have been on my Rules and Orders Committee since they both came on the council and helped pass every rule and every bylaw that has been passed over twelve years. And I'm going to miss them, and I'm going to miss all four of the members that are leaving. And, you know, the town is better because they have served, the town looks better, the town is better, all the reasons Nick said. And I just hope the new council going forward can improve upon it and keep it going the way we have by not always agreeing, but not always being disagreeable. Nobody on this council has ever created a stir amongst the other counselors for any kind of length of time other than maybe an argument at a council meeting that lasted a couple of minutes, but no grudges have ever been held. And this council has worked together for twelve years through every different council president, and we've stayed together. And I hope that the four of you aren't going away, you're going to come to some meetings, and I hope the new council is going to understand that they get more done by working together than working apart, and I'm sure they will. And we're going to miss you, all of us are going to miss you.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you, all of you, for your service and commitment to the town. It has been such a pleasure working with you on the council and on the various committees and as a resident, on the resident side also, so thank you so much.
Councilor Cal?
Yes, I am. I'm going to miss everyone, and, you know, we've been in this for a long time together, and it's clear that the town is so much better today than it was twelve years ago. We've done a lot of work in this town, and we did it all together, and I'm really proud of that. Thank you.
Councilor Christopher?
Sure. I want to echo the thoughts of everybody. As I thought about how a lot of these retiring counselors are leaving us, I kind of thought a lot about how I'm kind of just starting and how I'd like to follow in their tradition and their rules. I know I've met Paul, I think this was the first time I had met him through this, and it's been a pleasure. And Rich, I played hockey with, and I'm sure I'll keep that up. And, but for Ross and Nick specifically, it has been really great to be able to work with you guys. For Ross, you can, you won't have to worry about the phone call every four years if you're going to run for this. But for Nick, Nick I've known for about ten years now, when Tino and I had the slush cart at the Little League field, and Nick would always come by, and when I think Alicia was playing softball. And he wasn't able to get us out of our licensing board issues, but he was a great friend of the slush cart. I could tell stories forever about the times we've had, but he's been just such a great friend to me, him and Kathy professionally, and I want to thank him for the work that he's done. And I'm really grateful for the six-month tutelage that I've had under these individuals because I've taken a little piece from each person and really wanted to blossom and take the new council in a direction that would make them proud. So thank you guys for your support, and I look forward to continuing to work with you even if you don't always want to hear from me.
Thanks, Peter. Councilor Terry?
So I get to go last, I guess, so everything's pretty much been said, but it is kind of amazing. We're losing, you know, thirty-six years of service on the council. Russ and I have gone back twelve years, plus the charter commission before that to start this. And Nick, and eight years, twelve years with Nick, eight years with Paul, four years with Rich, and, you know, I agree especially with Councilor Boncorry that, you know, the town is in a better place, and we don't always agree, but we can agree to disagree. And it is amazing to look around at the progress that we've made, and I thank you guys for that.
All right.
The young guy still looks average.
You haven't gone to relations. Town Hall will close at 12:00 PM on December 21st for a Christmas holiday event. January 2nd, 2017, Swearean Ceremony, Neil Shapiro, Center for Performing Arts at Winterford High School at 6:00 PM, looking forward to that. January 5th, 2017, Precinct Five Neighborhood Meeting, Center Business District Meeting at E.B. Newton, Lyceum Room at 6:00 PM. January 19th and 20th is the annual MMA event, which will be held in Boston. Toys for Tots, Police Station, Town Hall, Assessors Office are still looking for donations and gifts. Anything else?
Yeah, no, we had, you know, we put those gifts out today and yesterday, and they've been serving a lot of families in Winterford, certainly by some anonymous donations as well. Received some gift cards for food, so those families are greatly appreciative of their efforts of the police department and those who give to the police department. So thank you all to the public.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Yes, councilor?
One more thing, I'd just like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and a happy, healthy New Year, and a prosperous new council. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I know we don't want to leave. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.